Item C, receive an update on the design for Lyonsfield Synthetic Grass project and confirm the use of Park in Lou funds for the project.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Will Anderson. I'm a staff engineer in the Public Services Department. And I will be making the presentation regarding updating the Lyonsfield Synthetic Turf project as far as the status of the project as well as the funding. Randy Schwartz, Community Services Director, will be assisting me in addressing some of the funding aspects of this project. Basically, this project is going to replace the existing natural turf that's currently out on the field with a synthetic turf system. By doing so, we will be able to increase the use of the field primarily during the winter months. And we can also reduce city maintenance costs for the field primarily through a reduction in irrigation water as well as a reduction in labor efforts by city staff. Well, so far, the project was brought forth to council for inclusion in the capital improvements program. That was back in April of 2010. And we, you know, brought forth the design contract for our consultant, Verde Design, in November of 2010, which was approved by council. Since that time, the design has been underway. And we've actually had several public meetings to gain input as far as the layout of the field and the amenities within. We did host a, well, we were participants in the annual user group meeting in January of this year. And we held a separate public open house meeting at the Bel Air Elementary School in February. And at those meetings, we did provide several alternatives for the layout of the field. And we had, yeah, we had a consensus as far as a preferred alternative. And that is, basically, this has the soccer field kind of oriented angular within the field, within the baseball field. And the dash blue lines, those are actually the layout for a flag football. There are other alternatives that were developed and they were included in the council packet. And if you have any questions about those, we can address those later. So as far as the actual design process, our consultant has prepared a pre-design report. And they did analyze various items, including, you know, a preferred striping and field layout, which I just showed you guys. And then they did do an analysis of the existing parking out there compared to the potential use for both regular play and tournament play. And their conclusion was that there is currently adequate available parking to accommodate anticipated use. They also did a preliminary assessment of the drainage, site drainage. And they have determined it is feasible. I can share details with you about that during the question and answer period. Other items that are part of the pre-design that city staff is accounted, accounting for are the environmental documents. We are, they are currently under preparation. And we are, I guess there's a portion of the right field that currently crosses into school district property. And we are under preparation with the school district preparing a right-of-way license agreement. And the superintendent of schools has expressed interest in the preparation of this license agreement. So we will continue to move forward. As far as construction, the overall time period is four months. The timing of the construction has yet to be determined, but we will bring back to council, you know, be prior to going out to bid. We will come back with a recommendation on the timing of the construction because we do plan to have the design complete by this summer. And that could, as one alternative, allow us to construct and get the drainage system in place prior to Thanksgiving, which is when I consider the, or we consider the heavy rains to kick in. Or after the design is prepared, we can keep it on the shelf and resurrect it next spring for a more continuous construction operation. As far as the funding, when this project was presented to the Parks and Rec Commission back in January of 2010, at that time, it was estimated to cost 1.2 million to construct. Since that time, as, and as part of the pre-design report, the consultant is recommending a construction budget for the field portion only of 1.5 million, which is on the conservative side at this point, considering that design has yet to be finalized. And to date, the design costs, both for consultant and city staff time, are 75,000. And when this project was initially authorized, there were, there was $200,000 allocated for the design process. So accounting for the remainder of the work, I feel very confident we will remain within the allotted funding. As part of the design, we will be including bid alternates for restroom and concession stand. We do have two alternatives at this point. And one of them being a smaller footprint with just two single-stall restrooms. Another, that would add an additional 300,000 to the cost for the field. And we do have another bid alternate for a larger restroom concession stand structure that has separate male/female restrooms with two stalls with, in each. So for additional commenting on the funding, I'll let Randy take over.
Currently, the Park in Lou fund has a balance of 1.5 million dollars in there. One of the things that was discussed by council previously was the possibility of using some of the Park in Lou funds towards this project and also having city staff work with the nonprofit field user groups, the baseball groups, the AYSO soccer groups, et cetera, going to corporate sponsors or to their national organizations and reaching out for donations and for grants through those different organizations. I believe the information in the packet outlines a suggestion if, if the council were to, to look at recommending or setting aside a million dollars and of the 1.5 that's currently in the Park in Lou fund and then going, then asking the, the nonprofit groups to do a fundraising effort of half a million dollars to close the gap between those two. That would be the general recommendation at this point from staff. And I would also like to point out that Greg Pierce is in the audience. Greg is here. Greg is a Park and Rec Commissioner and is in charge, is the chair of the, the Commission's Committee for Athletic Fields, but I believe he is really here representing AYSO and their 1,200 members. And Greg has been sitting in on the user group meetings with the baseball groups, the football groups, et cetera, looking for funding. It's important for, as they've done, as they look at fundraising opportunities, and now Greg has already applied for at least one of the national, of the national grants. What's been difficult is not having a target construction budget, which has been 1.5 million dollars, as well as a request amount from the national organizations. If we have a set goal, in this case, 500,000 dollars, and between the groups, we come up with a funding strategy, it gives the, the opportunity for, for AYSO or the other organizations to, to really ask for hard numbers and have more specific data when they approach the, these corporate sponsors or the national organizations themselves. So that's more of the fundraising picture, and I'd be happy to answer any questions of
So to wrap up our presentation, our next steps will be to complete the design. That should be finished by this summer. And initiate the fundraising efforts. So prior to going out to bid to construct the project, we will return to council with an update on both the fundraising efforts as well as the design of the project. So I guess with that, we're open to answering any questions you may have?
Questions of staff?
To the Chair.
Michael?
I have some, you said we could discuss drainage during the questions. So I have a few questions on the drainage. And this is something that we may have covered before. It's been a while since we, we talked about this topic. And so it either slipped my mind or maybe I wasn't thinking along these lines back then. But currently, the way with the natural turf, any rainwater that falls on the field gets absorbed into the ground and doesn't ever see its way into our storm drain system. What we're proposing to do is capture some of that. And what I'm wondering is, are we going to capture all of the rainwater that falls on that field and divert it into our stormwater system? Or is it only a portion of the water that falls there?
The area where the synthetic turf will be installed is permeable. So any water that falls on the synthetic turf will pass through and be collected for input into a pipe drainage system within the First Avenue Extension. Part of our analysis will include quantities of water to ensure that we're not overtaxing the pipe, both in the adjacent area as well as farther downstream. And we do have a soils report that kind of addresses the stability of the subgrade, which will help us provide a system that will not settle over time.
Okay. So, so we're basically talking zero runoff, but everything that falls on that field gets diverted into our stormwater system?
Correct. And that will also prevent water from being transported off the site further to the east as it currently does. So hopefully, that will alleviate drainage problems on the adjacent sites at the Bel Air baseball field.
Okay. So worst-case scenario, what if the infrastructure that's currently in place can't handle the amount of water that we're going to put into it?
I believe the odds of that are very low. The existing pipe out there is a 48-inch. And the quantity of water we're generating, my preliminary estimates, once upon a time, were fairly low. And because it will actually flow into a sump system, we can kind of control the amount of water released into the system if, if, if we need to.
Okay. And was there any thought given to doing anything else with that water that gets collected other than putting it into the stormwater system? I've been reading about some cities are putting in these filtration systems on near parking lots where they catch the water and then let it sort of filter itself back into the aquifer.
Yes, we did some analysis. We thought, you know, collection of water for use at the adjacent community gardens. There were, I guess they really weren't considered part of the initial scope. And I guess it really wasn't a, a cost-effective approach to the situation. And that, that was the conclusion of our consultant. Yeah, we can, we can definitely investigate further.
Okay. Yeah, if it's not a lot of additional work, maybe there, there would be interest in the community to raise funds separately for collecting that water and putting it to, to other uses.
Okay, yeah, that's definitely something we can investigate.
Thank you.
And that could be added on later on.
I read.
Okay. Didn't the, I believe what you're talking about is what we already have at part of Bel Air where they have the, I totally forgot what it's called, but they have the drainage, storm drainage system and all those things with the plants and all that. So they have two of those things. Maybe there's a way to easily connect it or to make something in the middle of the parking lot or do something like that. So I, I know Jim Shannon has a lot of information about that.
Yeah, he did his vegetated curb near the Bel Air School.
Right. So that, I think that's what Michael's talking about.
Okay.
So that might even be something to do on the parking lot on the west side of the baseball field. So you could do something like that. I, I have a question about the, the restrooms. Do they have to be ADA acceptable?
Yes, they do. And yes, they will.
Okay. And then the, the other thing, and I don't know who can answer this, how, let's see, how likely or how much is it possible to get in these times from grants and donations? Is it, I mean, should we, should we set a reasonable goal? Let's say 200,000, 100,000? What's reasonable to set that we could actually get the money for? Or does anyone know?
That's a difficult question to ask. I think-
It was easy to ask. It probably is hard to answer.
It's easy to ask. It's my fault. Difficult to answer. Specifically, many of the grants out there are, are set aside with specific criteria. In this case, we are serving a wide spectrum of ages where the field will be used with soccer from four-year-olds all the way through adult play. There's many different sports that are going on out there that some of the organizations will be able to work together. There's roughly 3,000 athletes in the various leagues that will be using the different facilities. So those are all to the benefit. The fact that there are no other year-round fields in, for public use in either of our neighboring cities gives us a little bit of an edge there. I, I think it'd be hard to set a specific target and say, this is how much we're going to be getting from certain organizations. We don't have that experience, but we know that it is attractive. We have submitted a preliminary grant to one of the companies, and it was a competitive grant. We are given an award, although it's conditioned upon which vendor is selected in the process. So we are not counting it. We have not made that information available because we're still going to pick the best vendor for the facility with all the criteria that, that Public Services and Verde Design come up with. So we know that it's at least attractive in some aspects with the multiple use and multiple age groups going on out there.
Okay. I have one more question, but go ahead. In conjunction with what Michael was saying, there are clean, there are grants to do the water filtering, clean water thingies that, like I said, the names are just escaping me tonight, that might be available. There's some through CCAG, there's some through the state. So maybe we can do a joint thing.
And we do, we are looking at that. I think Proposition 84 is one of those. Switching the field over to synthetic grass does save approximately 900 to a million, 900,000 to a million gallons per year. And that's just one more of those factors that we will put into all of the grants that we apply for.
Mr. Rico?
Thank you.
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue, down at the end of where all your water comes. You're saying that you're going to have a sump, basically, and then pump the water from the sump into the beginning of the storm drain on First Avenue, and then it's going to continue out to wherever the water goes, basically down Angus and I guess get pumped over into Cupid Row. What about pumping the water directly in the beginning of Cupid Row, right where it comes under the Huntington there? That way, it doesn't have to go into a pipe and potentially overtax the pipe, put, put a new pipe, and it's going to end up in the same place, I think. It's just a thought that came up.
Okay. We'll take that into consideration.
To the Chair. There are two items that I had, well, actually three, but I think the drainage has kind of started to dress itself to the consultant. There were two. It's the funding. One is funding and two is parking. On the parking issue, it is indicated there are 122 spots that are available for usage. And that is correct. I went and confirmed that today. 23 of those spots are on Bel Air grounds through a locked gate that primarily is used by Bel Air Field for Pony Baseball. Are those 23 being utilized by the Lyonsfield? My, my concern obviously on the parking is, will there be enough? I know the commission believes so. I think the consultant does. I believe staff does. I had also talked about when the train station moves, acquiring and asking if we could utilize, I think there's almost 70 spots are already paved, lined on the east side of the tracks that the train station currently uses. Has anyone reached out to them or inquired as if that would even be a possibility?
Well, to address maybe the Caltrain station first, I know that the Joint Powers Board, the JPB, has yet to finalize their decisions as, in regards to the real estate aspects of their station, which, you know, will be replaced by the grade separation. So that, that situation is pending. And, you know, we will, we will be in contact with them, you know, to, to see if they're open to that possibility. So-
Okay. So no contact has been made thus far, so we're not sure. Is that fair?
I don't believe that.
After the initial question came up at the previous meetings, I contacted them only about the use of the current spaces. And they were not open to the possibilities of permits or, or anything else in terms of the public using those spaces as, on a free basis in terms of the long-range plans, abandonment. I don't think we've done that at this point.
I believe that there has been discussion between the Public Services Director and Caltrain staff having to do with the overall use of that facility. And Caltrain's response at the current time is that they are not yet prepared to have a substantive discussion about their future plans for that space once they relocate down to the new station location. So we will follow up further with them and identify the urgency or the desire with which it's our interest to understand more completely whether there is at least any possibility of this particular item being a consideration by Caltrain.
In the 23 spots on the Bel Air property?
Actually, those were included in the analysis done by our consultant. Their grand total for parking spaces, you know, at various locations, came out to 130, including those 23. So I guess we will definitely reconfirm this, but if you take out the 23, that leaves us with 107. And their tally for a typical tournament is 54 spaces required. So if both fields are in operation for tournaments, that's 108 spaces required, and we have 107. So we can definitely have that reconfirmed.
Just so I'm clear too, when we're saying we need 100, 100, we'll just say, are you talking about participants? Is that taking into participants and people who are viewing, the umpires or the referees? What are we encompassing when we talk about two tournaments equalling 100 and whatever?
I'm assuming it's the entirety, players, you know, like the-
Spectators?
Spectators, umpires, staff crew, yeah.
That's why, that's why tournaments are looked at separately than regular league play or practices. Practices is the lightest amount where typically the parents will drop off the kids and then pick them up an hour or so later. And there's very few cars on the, on the site. For league games, the parents come, they stay, they watch. Then you get the overlap where you have two teams playing. You have two teams that have come in and they're waiting to play the next game. They may be warming up, et cetera. So there's really enough cars for four teams. But once the game is over, they go home. Tournament play is the highest level of parking demand, and that's because you are playing throughout the day. So your cars are staying there. You're watching the other teams that are playing. It's something that rarely happens. And I would also point out that the improvement that we're making at Lyonsfield or that we're proposing for Lyonsfield, the difference in play is going to be the months of December, January, February, March. Right now, where we only have the field open for approximately 10 of those four months, 10 days throughout those four months where we're able to keep the field open because of the dampness out there. Bel Air Field during that time would still be closed. So in terms of tournament play for the current condition, we're out there and it's tough and, and that really hasn't changed. And is more parking desirable? Absolutely. If something were to open up over at the Caltrain site later on, is that desirable? Of course it is. But the additional play with the synthetic field is really going to come in the winter months when Bel Air Field's closed. So we're really looking at the games or the tournaments being 54 cars for one diamond rather than the 108 cars for the two fields.
And I, and thank you for the answer. It's just, I'm, on the parking issue, I'll leave that I know it's believed that there will be, quote, adequate parking as indicated. And my worry always is it looks good on paper. Consultants tell you it looks great. And I always remember a count, former council member and mayor that said, still today, he regrets the decision of Shelter Creek because the parking looked good on paper, but we obviously know what we have today. So, and you can't get parking back. Once you go forward with something, it is what it is. And we have residential neighborhood there. So I certainly would hate to see, as we already have people that are concerned on the other side of the city park, that their streets become, which is already congested, even more so with the limited parking being taken up by others. So the parking is still a concern for myself. Maybe I'm just the only one that not convinced that that's enough parking at this time. In regards to the funding, before, like you, you had said, it was 1.2. There was some discussion, though nothing was confirmed or decided, about potentially taking 600,000 out of Park in Lou at that time and maybe 600,000 for fundraising or other efforts. I believe what you're asking is consideration by the council to, out of the 1.5, to put a million dollars toward this project, leaving about 500,000 dollars. And I'm just wondering if this is something, have we really examined where we want our Park in Lou fees to go? Are there other projects on the horizon? I don't know that we're going to get much more influx of Park in Lou fees soon. So that's another mechanism that concerns me too, is, is on the funding. And I guess that's something the council has to be comfortable of how much and they, of the, of the current existing fund that they want to have dedicated toward the project.
Anything else? What do you need from us tonight, then? You want a confirmation of the use of parking in Lou fees without an amount or?
I think at this point, you've, we got your comments regarding the various issues associated with the design development, which was very helpful. As staff indicated, we intend to proceed to the final design, taking into consideration the comments that have been made tonight. You will next see the project for your authorization to bid the project. We don't normally do that, but because of the funding situation and because of the various design issues that the council has expressed interest in, we want to make sure that you're satisfied with the project and all of the various issues before we put it out to the construction industry to receive construction bids. The, the one last item that would be very helpful is if the council has, we've, we've heard from council member Medina regarding the funding, but we do have- heard from council member Medina regarding the funding, but we do have a little bit of a chicken and egg problem here with this project. If we, we don't want to come back to you with the, with the project completely designed and then say, okay, we'd like to be able to tell you at that point that we have some amount of funding commitments beyond funds that currently reside in the city's resources. So if you have a comfort level and you're prepared to tell us tonight what that might be, then we can use the remainder amount as the, and/or if you can tell us what you think we should be looking for in terms of non-city contributions to this project. Having that target, as the director indicated, would be very helpful.
I believe in the staff report, there was a mention of potential use of redevelopment funds? No?
It, it's Park and Lou fee funds. I'm, I'm not remembering that there was mention of redevelopment funds.
Yeah. Let's see. Actually, it, it was listed as a potential funding source by our consultant, along with other grant opportunities.
Yeah, it's on, yeah. I, I, I don't think that that was something that we had discussed with you before or that has a, it, it would be something we'd have to look at carefully. The project is located within the project area, but we have a lot of demands on redevelopment funds that this project, given that it has other funding alternatives, would make that a less viable resource. But that's, that's clearly a, a decision that rests with the city council, whether you'd like us to explore that.
Okay. Well, personally, I have no problem in using up to a million dollars. I think the project is a great project. You have a whole field down there that's not drained properly, that's unusable a large time of the year, and if you can turn that around, it's going to be a huge community benefit.
I agree with you, and I seem to recall that before all this, your staff and the Park and Rec Commission went through a whole exercise of what can we spend this money on? And there wasn't a lot. I know you looked for other fields, I know you looked at fields that exist, and how do, can you reconfigure them to make more playing fields in time? We already did and already rehabilitated the playground equipment and things like that. There is no more places, unless we spend a lot of money on land, and there's not a lot of land, there's not, if I remember the analysis right, there was not much else we can do that would give the same benefit for as many players as we have out there. So I, I too am comfortable with up to a million. And I, and as, I would like us to look at redevelopment agencies. Times are tough out there, and I would not like us to skimp on, on something this major because we don't have a couple hundred thousand dollars or because we only get, you know, 50, I mean, 500, you know, whatever it is. I, I'd like us to look at it, and maybe it's not for the, maybe it could be a partial thing for the drainage itself and not necessarily for the park part. So maybe there's something we can do, because that area does, just in general, for health reasons, if nothing else, needs to have the drainage fixed. So that might be a, a venue that we can look at.
Good. Michael?
I, I agree. I, I think I'd be comfortable spending up to that much to get the project going.
Rico.
Okay.
You have your direction. Thank you very much.
Good luck.